Good evening, everybody. It's Thursday, August 5th. I'm Commissioner Greg Hooksmo and I am calling the August 5th meeting of the Gig Harbor Planning Commission to order. First thing we'll do is roll call Commissioner Saltis.
Here.
Commissioner Bradbury.
Here.
Commissioner Graina.
Here.
Commissioner Krasik.
Here.
And absent today is Commissioner Brown, or excuse me, Commissioner Bennett. And hopefully Commissioner Brown will be joining us shortly, and I will make a note for the record when he joins. From the city staff, we have Carl Vasinas and Kim Mahoney, welcome.
Present, thank you.
And Michelle Thomas.
Present.
So first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the meeting of July 1st. So I am willing to entertain a motion unless there is any discussion or changes to those minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I will move for adoption of the minutes. Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So we just have one item on the agenda and it's a fat juicy one. So we will dig right in. Carl and Kim will let you take the floor to discuss the shoreline master program periodic update and the study session for this evening.
All right, thank you Chair. Before I start, I would just like to make a note that for, for, for all of you just to know that recently, Kim Mahoney has been reclassified from an associate planner to senior planner. So she is a, she's been working out of class for, I don't know, a year or something and just knocking things out of the park. So she's been recognized for that work and she's now been reclassified as senior planner. So congratulations, Kim. Just wanted to
Congratulations.
Note that for the record.
Yeah, congratulations, Kim.
Thank you to everybody on the planning commission. I appreciate it.
Yes, very well deserved. And just to note to everyone else, if you could please mute your mics and then we'll let Carl again take the floor. And thanks for noting that, Carl.
You're welcome, Chair. Yeah, it is very, very well deserved. Well, so first, I guess I'll get started here and it's unfortunate the Commissioner Brown hasn't joined us yet. I was hoping that he would be here. You'll note in the memo that I, that we had provided you all with that, you know, I'd kind of gone through a brief history of what we talked about last time and what, kind of what we're going to talk about today. But as part of that, I wanted, you know, we wanted to address a couple of questions that came up in our, in our former discussion when we met back on July 1st, which seems like, I don't know, it seems like it's you, but to me, it seems like six months ago at this point, but Commissioner Brown had brought up and raised an issue with the master programs regulations around live aboardments. And, and I think there was some, I recall there was some discussion about that amongst the commissioners. And so we decided that there would be, you know, that we would bring it back to you at this meeting and the staff would go and kind of do a little bit of research around live boards. And, and so Commissioner Brown had followed up with a couple of, a few emails along the way, sort of raising his concerns. And, and he and I actually had a discussion earlier today, just to kind of sort of figure out, let him know what we've come up with and, and kind of figure out, you know, where he was coming from exactly on his questions. And really the issue sort of, the, the issue stemmed from the, the understanding that our current amendment language was going to prohibit live aboardments within the city of Gig Harbor. And I, and that might be, and I, and I apologize to any other commissioners who might have that understanding as well. If that's something that I had brought up on the last meeting, I apologize. Because that is not the case. We are not making any changes relative to live aboardments in the program in, in the city of Gig Harbor. We do, we do currently regulate live aboardments as, not as their own unique use, but we, we regulate them under a marina use. And so there are allowances for them as a primary residence, so long as they meet certain criteria, certain regulations that are laid out in the master program. And we checked in to state law a little bit as well. And, and from what we can tell, state law also supports live aboardments as long as there are certain, you know, regulations and stipulations that are, that are being met. And so right now, we feel as if, we feel like there is no issue relative to live aboardments and, and that there is not really anything to address in the current regulations. And as I said, we're not proposing any amendments. We haven't heard anything from ecology on that in that regard either. There was nothing in the checklist about live aboardments. I, I did tell Commissioner Brown that I would commit to definitely bringing it up to ecology when we get into this next phase of the periodic review and they're sort of looking at our holistic approach here to the periodic review and just let them know that there was, you know, there was a, there was some concern raised and I just wanted in, just make sure that we are being consistent with state law in the way our program is currently written. So that's kind of the follow-up report on that. And I'd be happy to, I, I guess if it's okay Chair, maybe as we've been doing, just sort of breaking this up along the way, since there's so much information, it might make sense to talk about each item as we, as we go. Is that, does that sound okay? Or would you rather just kind of keep moving?
Well, from the things we're going to cover today and specifically addressing live aboardments, maybe we could stop for a moment and, and just see if anybody has any other questions because a couple of things pop into my mind anyway, but you know, with regards to restrictions or whatever, is it just an unlimited? You know, is there a limit, for example? What about a floating house? You know, is that permitted? And, and so I am kind of curious what you learned in that regard or, or what the expectations are in Gig Harbor.
Yeah, and welcome Commissioner Brown. We were just, we were kind of diving into the, the live aboard discussion here prior to you join, joining in. And I, and I let everyone know that you and I had had a discussion about this and kind of gave everyone a just a quick high-level debrief on what we had learned and what, a little bit about what you and I talked about. So the Chair just asked a question that I think does get to part of the point of some of Commissioner Brown's questions as well. And that is, you know, do we limit the number of live aboardments within a marina or under a marina use? And the answer is that we don't, we don't, we don't limit them in, in the aspect or in, in such a way as to say, you may only have 10, you know, if you have 20 slips, you can only have, you know, only 50% of them could be live aboardments or something along, you know, 10 of them could be live aboardments or something along those lines. Where, I think where the limitations would likely come in is with, you know, is relative to concurrency. Because they, the, the live aboardments, in order to have live aboardments within the marina, you have to have, you have to have a certain level of pump out capability. There has to be restrooms on site. And there would, there would, obviously there would need to be some parking considerations. Those are the things that come to mind off the top of my head. And so I think that some of those considerations would likely limit some of, some of that in, in how, you know, the number of live aboardments that could be allowed. Now, Commissioner Brown had, had found some language in state law, which I, I have not been able to find. And I need to do a little more research on, but there was potentially some limitation out there. And I think Commissioner Brown, he said it was 10%. I remember.
Yeah, 10% of the available slips.
Yeah. And so that's, I, I need to, I need to find the, the citation on that and, and sort of follow up on it. We, we were not able to find that, that figure in state law, but beside, a little bit beside the point, there would be some state agencies involved in the permitting of a marina. And so those state laws as they exist would also be considered when we were and when we are approving a marina if live aboardments were to be proposed. So I don't have a great answer for you Chair on that. Kim, do you want to add anything to what I've said? Maybe something I've missed maybe or?
I don't think you missed anything. I don't think that you misrepresented anything, Carl. You know, we, our SMP does not regulate the number of live aboard vessels that could be associated with the marina. It's just that if the live aboard vessels are intended to be a part of the marina's operation, it needs to be disclosed to staff as a part of the substantial development process for the marina. And the number of slips and the appurtenances there too have to be disclosed to staff in those application materials. But there's no limitation that we have in our SMP or we're able to find in the Washington Administrative Code or any section of the Shoreline Management Act that, that limited that.
And again, I think maybe, you know, I, I think it, as I said, I think it is worth mentioning to ecology when we're, when they're reviewing our amendments here, just to make sure that we're not out of compliance or we're not out of line with state law in some manner. But also, as I said, I think, and, and I haven't, you know, I, I, to my knowledge, and I've only been with the city about six years or so. To my knowledge though, we have not permitted any kind of live aboardments. I don't think that that's come up in any marinas that I'm aware of. So it's not something, I don't think it's something that comes up often. And maybe, maybe it should be coming up more often. And that's, and I think there's about, there's probably a valid point to be made there. But you know, this discussion I think is also bringing it to staff's attention a little bit more. And we have heard from the community a little bit about live aboardments and, you know, there's, there's some, there are some concerns out there. And not just with live aboardments, there are, you know, there are concerns with short-term rentals, short-term vacation rentals in general in Gig Harbor. And I think that is something that is likely to be coming to the planning commission in the not-too-distant future to get an opportunity to, to chew on. And there's, there's several jurisdictions that are looking at it. In fact, we just heard today that the city of Stillicum is, has, if I understood it right, they've prohibited short-term vacation rentals altogether. So there's, there's some, there's some draconian efforts going on out there. And then there's other efforts to just manage and regulate them in order to, in order to gather, really garner some of those taxes that, that city should be getting from those, those businesses. But you know, so I think that this discussion ultimately will get wrapped up into that discussion when we tackle short, short-term vacation rentals in general. That's, that's the kind of the best answer I have at the moment.
Carl, I was only going to jump in on the Chair's question. Part of his question was regarding floating houses, which is something, that, that is something that is prohibited by our SMP. There is even some pretty recent, and I can't remember how recent, but some pretty recent legislation in Seattle, in the city of Seattle and how, how it was regulating floating houses. But in, in Gig Harbor, any residential use that is waterward of the ordinary high waterwork is prohibited in every shoreline environmental designation. So we don't allow it those years.
Except for the, except for the grandfather ones, I guess.
Sure, you're, you're right to say that. There, of course, non-conforming rights could potentially apply for, for some sort of use like that.
Yeah. So I wonder, I wonder Carl, you know, is the reason that it hasn't come up? Because the way that I read the language and some of the stuff we're going over today is, is unless there is substantial development, then there's going to be a lot of grandfathering. And I wonder how much grandfathering is going on. For example, I know that, that West Shore Marina, well, well, it states that if you have live aboard vessels, that you have to have permanent restroom facilities. But at West Shore Marina, there are live aboard vessels and there are no permanent restroom facilities. So, so I wonder if that's a, because they're grandfathered or they're flying under the radar?
Well, grandfathering, as you know, in, in planning language is not, you know, not something that we use all the time, you know, it's a, it's kind of a misnomer in some ways because really it would need to be illegally established and permitted use in order for it to be considered non-conforming. And so, you know, it, it would really depend on if it were legally established, maybe if it were established prior to, maybe prior to the act, possibly. I don't know. We'd have to look into, into the law to see how that would sort of play out. But likely, if they're, if they have not received permits for those, for that type of a use there from either the city or state or county, as it, as it may have been, then they're, they, they may be out of compliance. It could be illegal. Now, we haven't received any complaints in order to investigate that. And that's kind of how our code compliance works. Commissioner Brown, the, the floating house prohibition that Kim just brought up, does that, is that one of the concerns that you had relative to prohibitions maybe?
It may be, but I, I hadn't seen that term before. Is, is that the term that's used in the SMP? Is there a?
What is the term, Kim, were you?
No, Commissioner Brown has not. It's just a residential use. So in our use table, it's just described as residential. And then the residential use for whether it's permissible or not is broken out per shoreline environmental designation based on the residence's proximity to the ordinary high watermark. So anything waterward of ordinary high watermark, you know, would, would reasonably be one of those floating houses. And that is expressly prohibited in every environmental designation.
And I was kind of, oh, sorry, go ahead, Commissioner Brown.
I believe it's also prohibited by the state.
And you might be right. I was jogging my memory to try and recall a, a training I sat in on a year or two ago that talked about that case in Seattle. It was, it was a fairly large one. It was, it involved the city of Seattle. And I just, I don't remember enough of the details about it. But, but you may be right that, that it drove some sort of state legislation to prohibit that everywhere in Washington.
And that kind of gets, you know, when we had, when we were discussing earlier, Commissioner Brown, I was, you know, talking about that the, the live aboard definition talks about a vessel. You know, it says that it must be, the definition states that it has to be a vessel. And then we have a definition of vessel in our SMP. And so, and, and a vessel has to be something that is meant to be, I can't remember how the definition reads. I don't have it in front of me, meant to be na- navigable or there with me. I'll just read the definitions here right here. And that's, you know, that's, what's that?
I got you.
Oh, go ahead.
Vessel includes ships, boats, barges, or any other floating watercraft which are designed and used for navigation and do not interfere with the normal public use of the water.
So that's what I was kind of getting to when I said that it would need to be, you know, registered or licensed in some manner. You know, it would need to have those, those tags on it and having been, I, I thought inspected by the, but inspected by the Coast Guard and licensed with the state, I believe.
Well, private vessels must be registered with the state. They can be inspected by the Coast Guard, but that's not required. Or they can be federally registered as an option to being registered with. No, they can be federally registered, but they also need state registration. But that's not a license. That doesn't, no inspection comes with that. No approval comes with that. So I could probably license my bathtub or get a cert certificate for my bathtub if, if I wanted to. It, it doesn't imply any seaworthiness or approval from the state. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, you could, you could, you could certainly make the case that the rental houseboats on Lake Mead, for example, are navigable vessels. And you might make the case that the rental houseboats at in Gig Harbor now that exist are navigable vessels. I mean, they have propulsion. You could drive them around if you wanted to.
Right.
So it, it's, it's not a, it's not a very specific definition.
Yeah.
But, I mean, once more, I get back to the point, what are we trying to do here? You know, what, what problem are we trying to prevent or what improvement are we trying to arrive at?
Yeah, well, and I, and I think that's a good point. And I, that's how I started this conversation is to say that we're, you know, we're really not with the, with this current periodic review, we are not attempting to amend those regulations around live aboardments. And that's, you know, largely because it wasn't mandated by ecology through their checklist for this periodic review cycle. And it wasn't proposed as any kind of an amendment by either city staff or council or any community members. And so it didn't really make its way onto the checklist for this, for this round of review. And so I, you know, I, my, my recommendation at this point is that we, I think it's a very good discussion and I think it's one that we should carry on. But I think maybe it should be tabled until we get into the short-term vacation rental discussion on the upland side and then see how that can affect and if there's any effect that would, that would, that would necessitate amendments to the, to the shoreline master program.
I think, I think that's a good suggestion, Carl. So why don't, why don't we move on then with what's on the agenda for this evening?
Okay, thank you Chair. And so one more item that we discussed at the last meeting that we wanted to bring back to you tonight for, for, for a discussion. And that was the substance, the definition of substantial development. And if you'll recall, our former definition or our current definition, I should say, is that showing up okay for everybody? So our former definition, if you'll recall, has included a a dollar amount, a threshold amount that a, that a, that a pro, a project would have to exceed in order to warrant requiring a shoreline substantial development permit. And some of the concern that was raised by the planning commission is that, well, here we have this, this dollar threshold amount and that threshold amount needs to be reviewed and potentially revised based on a an index that's managed by the Office of Financial Management every five years. And so there was some discussion about, well, could we take that figure out so that we don't have to deal with having outdated code every five years or so? And so, so staff went back and took a look. And what we noted and what I didn't note at the former meeting is that, that, that threshold amount is found in, in three different places in the code. It was found in our definition here. It was found, it's found twice, two more times in our administrative section in chapter eight. And so our, and, and in each case, it's, it's expressed a little bit differently. So which is kind of, is a little, a little odd, oddball. But what we are suggesting is, is this, what we suggest is that we, we do take, we do try and just get a definition in place that really speaks to what substantial development is. And this is taken verbatim from, from the RCW. And just kind of eliminate that dollar amount here. However, we think that having that dollar amount is, is kind of important. It, it helps, it, it at least helps planners when we're administering the code. And I think that it helps our third-party consultant and, and also other professional biologists that are writing reports for, for folks in, who, who are proposing, you know, projects, private landowners to kind of just know what that figure is. And if there's any question then about what, where, what that figure is or what it should be, they could refer back then to this definition of substantial development and they can kind of figure out where we are in that five-year revision cycle. And then if there's questions, I suppose they would call staff and we would have that number written down in the margin of our SMP in, in chapter eight somewhere, as we all do currently. But I, we, we really like the idea of having a more generic, concise, verbatim definition for substantial development in chapter two, while leaving the dollar amount in, in chapter eight, the administrative section of the, of the SMP. I guess I'll open that up for anybody's thoughts.
Well, I, I think that meets the, meets the mark and answers the question that, that was raised to, to make the code more straightforward and, and eliminate the need to, to update it every time that the state changes it.
Well, my general comment was that what I read here doesn't change that. It still establishes a dollar threshold. It says exceeds $5,000.
Yeah, that was the original, Commissioner Bradbury, that was the original threshold that was set with, I assume with the, well, no, it must have been later. And as an amendment to the act, but, so it says that it would be $5,000, but adjusted for inflation by the office, the Office of Financial Management every five years, beginning July 1st, 2007. So what this definition then essentially does is if somebody has any question, they can go back and they can sort of calculate what year we're in now, starting out at $5,000 and expect that, you know, it's, it's changed that many times along the way every five years.
So, so the idea then is anybody wanting to submit a proposal would make that calculation themselves based on DOL stats?
Yeah, based on Office of Financial Management. Yeah. Or they could, or they could call the city. And again, we would have this, we're going to, we, we like the idea of having the amount still expressly spelled out in chapter eight. And even though it will be out of date, somebody who is making a proposal to the city for development in the shoreline jurisdiction, you know, might reasonably look at chapter eight to see how a shoreline substantial development permit process is done. And then they would see that amount there. If they had questions about what that substantial development definition is, they could come back to chapter two and then they would see that, okay, it started out here and every five years changed to this point. They could also then look and see, okay, well, when was this last amended and make sort of a, a, a calculation as well. It's not, I, I agree completely that it is not perfect. And I'm not sure how to, how to deal with it otherwise, because it's going to change and there's nothing that we as the local jurisdiction can really do about that.
Carl, also for what it's worth, I, I'm involved with an, an organization. We had to go through this process and, and, and as we were digging into it, you know, this is the, this is the language that we looked at and said, okay, you know, obviously there's been some adjustments and, and that's exactly what we did. We called the city to find out what the current day number was and, and ensured at least what we were doing. We were, we were trying to ensure that we stayed under that threshold.
Yeah. And here I've switched over to chapter eight now to show you the administrative section in of how, kind of how that reads. So this, this would read with the dollar threshold amount, but in this permit required, it provides some, you know, a little bit more information that would refer you back to, essentially back to RCW and the WAC as well as to the exemptions for substantial development permits. So that would be another sort of Easter egg to, to, to look at and say, okay, well, there's, here's this, here's this amount or the value was amended or adjusted for inflation by 9058030. And then further on in the administration, this, this other instance of it is far more detailed and actually includes most of the definition. far more detailed and actually includes most of the definition, that's in chapter two anyway, so it's a little duplicative. But again, including the dollar threshold amount here, maybe, maybe we don't need it in both places. Some might argue, and I think that was the discussion we had, is, you know, do we need it at all, but in talking with other staff here at the city, and also when Peter Caddich was working here, and he was kind of our shoreline guru, he was, he was pretty adamant about keeping that number in the, the shoreline master program, just for some level of clarity, and, and, and it is, even though it is a point in time, at least at that time, it would say, all right, back in 2021, the number was $7,047, so then we look, you know, well, that would have been, this is supposed to be 2019, so I guess in a couple of years, people will be looking at this and saying, okay, this will have changed again, and what's that new number? We have to call the city. Under our next periodic review, then we would get an opportunity to update that dollar amount more time. But the definition would remain the same, I think that's important.
Carl, would there be any advantage to putting some language in there that says that persons contemplating development are encouraged to contact the city for the current number?
That, that might not be a bad way to go, and, you know, and maybe, you know, we did talk about using a footnote when we were talking about this on July 1st, and Kim and I played around with that idea, and we eventually landed on this, this approach, because we felt like we were trying to fit too much language into a footnote. So we, we decided just to, you know, call it out verbatim in the definition, but I, I, I don't think that's a bad idea to say something like that, contact City of Gig Harbor Planning Division for, you know, current threshold amount, or something along those lines, we could, we could craft some language around that, I think that's a pretty good idea.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, but why not, why not? Why not make it so you have to take one less phone call and say, click here for current rate?
Yeah. That's a
I'd agree, that's a good idea.
I mean, that wouldn't work in a print copy, but I suppose we could then use a footnote to just put the web address to include the web address where someone could find that information, so if you were reading a printed copy, you could at least, you know, just type that into your URL and get there. We can, we can, we can go either direction with that, however, however you all think that's, should be done, whatever you think is the best for user friendliness.
Yeah, I tend to agree with what was said there, that I think we're moving more and more to people going online to get information, and like the chair says, that would save you a phone call.
Okay. If everybody agrees, we'll include that in in the version that you will see next.
I'm good with that.
Good, Carl.
Okay. Right. The other discussion on that point, I, it doesn't sound like it. And then I'll just, I'll just note, at the end of the memo, there's, there's a schedule there, and I would just wanted to note to y'all that we are looking at, let me stop sharing here for a moment. We are looking at using the joint review process, again, as we did with the the public art amendment that we recently went through on the shoreline master program, which would include a thirty-day joint comment period with the Department of Ecology. And essentially, what this does is, and, and then it would be a joint hearing with the Department of Ecology, like, like we did last time, which essentially sort of streamlines the process, so we have a shorter comment period on the back end of the approval process, we kind of handle it more at the front end, still the same amount of time for, for the public to get involved. It just it allows for a less cumbersome process on the back end after council approves the, the ordinance, so that's the, that's the direction we wanted to go, and so that was kind of the main point of that schedule, but also to let you know that we're, I'm trying to push forward if, if if planning commission is comfortable with what they see this evening, I'm trying to push forward with a September 16th public hearing on this SMP periodic review, and kind of get through this process once and for, once and for all.
Chair, I have to drop off for a few minutes, I'm gonna come back on by my phone, so I'll be out for a while. Thank you.
Okay. Let me move on now. To the slideshow, okay. So, tonight, we're looking at revisions from the, or amendments to the shoreline master program, other than those we were just talking about, and other than those that we previously looked at in the ecology checklist that has all the green and yellow highlighting in it, and I know that it's all kind of, I know that's all kind of confusing. I, I get confused with it right now, maybe you don't, maybe it's just me that gets confused. But I will, as we discussed at the last meeting, I will be putting it into, Kim and I will be working on putting it in kind of a, a more consistent spreadsheet that will be much easier to, much easier for you all to review, and much easier for the public to review prior to that public hearing, so that'll be the next big push here for staff to make this a little bit more user-friendly. But tonight, we're talking about those amendments that were highlighted yellow in that checklist, and most of those are really relative to the FEMA floodplain ordinance and consistency with the biological opinion that came out of the, out of the lawsuit, and I'll, I'll get into that in just a second. So this is, the next seven slides, I believe, are relative to item E in the checklist, which is to amend subsection 6.2.5.2.3, which is our critical fish and wildlife habitat areas section, and revise that to be consistent with revisions to Gig Harbor Master, the Gig Harbor Municipal Code, chapters 1808, which is our environmental chapter, and chapter 1810, which is our flood, flood hazard construction program. And, and so to address proposed FEMA special flood hazard area regulations, and this idea of the door to, what we, what we've sort of coined as the door-to-be approach. And just kind of as a quick refresher, where these doors come from, so there are three doors, there's doors one, two, and three. And so, those doors are what local jurisdictions are using as avenues to compliance with the biological opinion that was issued by the National Marine Fishery Service. So that biological opinion was the result of this, of a court order that was based on a suit against the Federal Emergency Management Agency, or FEMA. And the suit was that their national flood insurance program was in violation of the Endangered Species Act, that it was that the, that the National Flood Insurance Program was not protecting certain endangered species, and really more, most particularly salmon. And so that's why it was very, you know, it was, it's relative really to the Puget Sound. That buy-up was issued in 2004, and it affects all of the Puget Sound communities to varying degrees, and when it came out, there were these tiers, they put all of the counties and jurisdictions into a, a three-tiered system, and the first two tiers were, were very affected by it, and the third tier was not so much affected by it. And Gig Harbor fell into the third tier, actually. I, I don't know since then how that has evolved, and this, and it might be one of the reasons why FEMA has really not been breathing down Gig Harbor's throat, as far as auditing us or anything like that to ensure our compliance with that biological opinion. But, all that to say, so from that biological opinion, these three avenues were developed, door one, door two, and door three, and all jurisdictions had to determine which of those doors they were going to utilize in order to come into compliance with that biological opinion. Door one is a, is a model approach, and so FEMA had come up with a model that you could essentially just take and plug and play into your code. The problem with that, of course, is that it doesn't necessarily, isn't necessarily consistent with everybody's codes, and so there are all of these changes and things that, that you have to make, and so it, it's a very complicated process to try and get through door one in that, in that sense. And also, there's issues, I believe, with consistency between that model ordinance approach and state law, Washington state law, and so what, what, what has happened here is that there's, there's kind of a divide, a massive divide between what state law says and state law approach, and what FEMA's, what FEMA says and what, what FEMA's approach is, and local jurisdictions and counties are kind of caught in the middle of this, of this battle. A door-two approach is a, is a programmatic approach whereby a jurisdiction has codes and policies in place that would, that would stand, that would stand in place of the model ordinance, in other words, the jurisdiction already has an approach to deal with shoreline permitting, and that approach also satisfies this biological opinion. Door three is a case-by-case approach whereby the, the the jurisdiction is, is sort of looking at, they don't have necessarily a program that would apply across the board to every situation, but they look at it on a situational, you know, each, each project has its own has its own, its own issue, and apply code to each individually. Most jurisdictions are falling into some, some hybrid between door two and door three. And the City of Gig Harbor has been there for, probably since the beginning, because we've had a shoreline master program for a long time. Our most recent program is far more programmatic than most jurisdictions have. And in, in recent discussions with FEMA, you know, because this thing has been evolving over time, in recent discussions with FEMA, Kim and I have discovered that FEMA really now, anyway, looks at Gig Harbor as, as a fairly good example of a door-two community. And that's rare, there are not many door-two communities, and in fact, I was originally told there were only a couple, and neither one of them were really toeing the line, and one of those was King County, and FEMA's having a lot of problems with them, apparently. Recently, we've heard there are, there are more that have a door-to approach. Whether they've been fully certified or not is, is still kind of, I guess, a question. And again, this is all evolving, but the goal here for the City of Gig Harbor is to really be recognized as a solid door-to, and with the changes that are proposed here in the, in this periodic review, we, we believe that we are going to be solidly recognized as a, as a door-to community, now there will still need to be a few changes made to Gig Harbor Municipal Code 1808 and 1810 to, to bring these, all those codes into consistency, and that'll be something that we'll, we'll, we'll be tackling in the not-too-distant future to bring, bring all that into consistency as well, I don't, there was some talk about trying to get it done at the same time as this SMP periodic review, but I just don't think we have time for that at this point, so. Kim, anything you wanted to add to that? And I was kind of long-winded, but.
I think you explained it perfectly, though, so.
Okay.
I wouldn't add anything.
Any, any questions from, from commissioners on, on any of, on any of that sort of background information? Hopefully, it's not too arduous. And so, as, as I said, we're still gonna need to get FEMA's concurrence on these amendments that we're looking, at some of these amendments that we're looking at today. This is still sort of evolving. We've gotten a little bit of feedback from from the Department of Ecology, and in fact, we had to make a change to to one of the subsections that we're about to look at here as a result of some recent some recent direction from the Department of Ecology on how we were taught, how we were thinking of integrating language from 1810 into our shoreline master program. And so to, to that end, let me jump into this slide, back into this slide just a little bit here. So, the, oh, the other thing that I need to mention, just to add further confusion to this thing, is that there was a change made in chapter six of the SMP, early on in the chapter, to move where our notice and title language is located, and that was done by my predecessor, Peter Caddich, and the biologists, Reddy and Associates, and so we're, we're leaving it as they amended it, because I believe it is something that, actually, the planning commission at the time had reviewed and agreed was a good idea, but it changes all the, all the new, all the enumeration throughout the rest of the shoreline master program, so it makes it just a little bit more confusing, and so my headers in these in these slides are relative to what exists in the master program today. And then I just made a quick note that now it's actually rather than section 62523, it's now 62524, and so everything just advanced kind of one chapter. And I apologize for that confusion, I mean, again, again, I'm going to try and clear the error on that in some manner, when we put all this together for the, for the public hearing, and the final review by planning commission. So, jumping into this, let me stop this share and bring up chapter six. And so this is our critical fish and wildlife habitat areas, and so we made some, we made some significant changes in this chapter, and again, those are relative to trying in trying to get us really solidly into this door-to, door-to-be approach, however you want to look at that. And one of the, one of the major things that, that Kim and I recognized right away, that we felt would be an easy change to get us in through that door, is to recognize that right now in the shoreline jurisdiction, when an applicant comes in, they have to provide us with a habitat assessment, and that's just required for any development within the shoreline jurisdiction. And that habitat assessment looks at critical, you know, critical fish and wildlife habitat area, as well as any other critical areas that are within 300 feet of the, of the proposed development site. Now, our shoreline in the City of Gig Harbor is all, is considered, completely considered critical fish and wildlife habitat area. And so the next step in the process for an applicant is that they would then provide a habitat mitigation plan, or an HMP. So in every instance, in a shore, for shoreline development, we're requiring a habitat assessment that needs to be reviewed, and then followed up by a habitat mitigation plan. Now, some consultants who have gotten used to the City of Gig Harbor's shoreline master program are already providing us with a habitat assessment and a habitat management plan within the same initial report, that's sometimes a preliminary report, and then maybe there needs to be, you know, another review, and then we get a final report later, but a lot of them are already doing that, and so the idea here is to try and streamline this really for, for applicants, and just let them know right out of the gates that you are gonna need to provide us with a habitat assessment and management plan, just combining those reports, so it's, so it alleviates the confusion and ambiguity in our program, and so we have affectionately called that the hamp, which I, I love saying. I'll say it a lot, because I, I think it's fun, it's I'll say it a lot, because I I think it's fun, it's a fun a fun acronym to say, but. Anyway, so this is a new this is a new kind of a new idea for the city of Gig Harbor. And so far, it's been received pretty well by by those we proposed it to, and I think I think it's something that really has. Has legs and has a lot of support, so. That and that really gets us into by combining the requirements of the habitat assessment and the habitat mitigation plan into one plan. Again, trying to get to that door to programmatic approach. That really goes a long ways into firming up that idea of the of the programmatic approach. The the other thing that we did here in this section is that previously, we had a. An additional review that was required for both the habitat assessment and the habitat mitigation plan. And it's a forty five day additional review for all shoreline. Permits for all development proposed in the shoreline jurisdiction. And that review needs to be so that so what happens is the habitat assessment comes in, we have our. We have our. I just lost my train of thought there, we have our our initial permit review for for consistency. We send it out for notice of application, we send it out to agencies for review, the whole application. And then in addition to that, we have to send it out to these other three. Agencies, Washington State Department of Fish and Wildlife, Washington State Department of Natural Resources, and the United States Fish and Wildlife Service. For for another forty five day review. Now, we're supposed to get comments according to our program, we're supposed to get comments back from those agencies. And if we get comments back from those agencies that say, yes, there's definitely critical fish and wildlife habitat area there, or critical fish and wildlife. In that area of development, then we're supposed to do and require the habitat management plan. So as long as this master program has been on the books, and it's been 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 adopted. We've not received one comment from any of those agencies to that effect. Now, we know that we still need the mitigation plan regardless, because. Those species exist in when and we know that we're in critical fish and wildlife habitat area. Long story short, this forty five day review by these agencies is unnecessary, and we have confirmed that with both. The Department of Ecology and FEMA, and. These agencies are are still noticed, they still are aware of this project happening regardless. So it's not as if we're not sending them anything, they still have opportunity to comment both both through the notice of application. Both through public comment periods, CIPA review, there's there's a lot of. Touchpoints for those agencies to get involved if and if if they want to, and so this is just sort of an extra thing. Nobody's exactly sure where it came from. It's in our critical areas ordinance as well, and we'll we will be pushing to try and remove it from that ordinance. But it's it it sometimes really, really does affect the timeline. Of a project, especially the second forty five day review. The first forty five day review is oftentimes is oftentimes over is overlapped with. The notice of application, but you still end up with an additional what fifteen days, Kim, I think. That you have to account for on a shoreline application. Then you have another forty five day review later in the process, and so you have to tell the applicant, oh, sorry. We can't get to hearing, we can't issue CIPA until we do this other forty five day review, then issue CIPA. Then another, you know, thirty day review period, then we can get to our hearing. And so it's just extra time and money for applicants, it doesn't really need to be there, so. I think I've I think I've beat that horse at this point, but this is this is really exciting for staff. Because it's it's something that we have been scratching our heads about for a long time, and and it has been a sore spot. The next thing we took a look at here in the same section. Is and I'm going to come back to this highlight here, but the next point I wanted to bring up. Here's that second forty five day review that we're eliminating, oh, the other thing we eliminated in this section. Was this idea of an assessment of a project impacts on water quality in Crescent, Donkey, or McCormick Creeks. That's a statement that doesn't need to be made, because those are critical fish and wildlife habitat areas anyway. And so getting that level of specificity, getting to that level of specificity in the shoreline master program is unnecessary.
Hey Carl.
Yes.
I just wanted to jump in really quickly, just. Hopping back to the three review agencies that were that were, you know, no longer. Going to be sending the the review materials to, I just wanted to, if there's any any remaining heartburn. One last point that I would bring up is that most of these three review agencies are permitting agencies themselves for activities in the shoreline. And so, like Carl said, they're going to receive the application materials from our office, the notice of application, at the notice of CIPA. But they're also most likely going to be receiving these application materials from the property owners themselves. For necessary permits to be issued from these state and federal agencies. Which our local division requires to be provided to our office in advance of any certificate of occupancy. And and the site's use, so just if there's any remaining heartburn on the idea of of these agencies being removed from this process. They have more than sufficient opportunity to be involved in local development.
Thanks, Kim, that's a great point. Yeah, that's a really good point, thank you. So the other issue that we tackled here in this section. Is that once we get through, once we once we have a shoreline, once we have a mitigation plan in place. That mitigation plan, if the if the if based on that plan, the minute the administrator. Determines, well, and the way it used to read is that. If based on the comments we received from those agencies upon that second forty five day review. If they if those comments state that there should be some kind of additional buffer for that development from the shoreline. That then there there were some parameters thrown in here about what that buffer looks like, so it was not to exceed a hundred and fifty feet. Nor be less than twenty five feet. We've kind of changed that language up because we're not getting comments necessarily on the habitat management plan. I've been saying mitigation plan, I'm sorry, I misspoke, habitat management plan. And so this this would look like more of a review from staff's point of view. And so the administrator would be making that determination as to whether or not we need an additional buffer. Now, there's already a buffer required in in most instances. In the sense that a vegetation conservation strip is going to be required, and that can and that and that can be of varying. Degrees of depth depending on the use and where it's located. So this buffer very rarely does get applied already, but. In in checking in with ecology and FEMA, you know, our original idea was, well, maybe we just get rid of this buffer altogether, because it. Doesn't seem to serve much purpose, since we don't apply it often, but in checking in with FEMA and ecology. I don't, it doesn't appear that we can do that, and so. And the recommendation from FEMA was actually to increase. This this minimum on the buffer from twenty five to fifty feet. And so that's what we have proposed in the language. That's before you here tonight. As well, we there was a a an allowance for a buffer reduction in this section. And we've removed that buffer reduction. Because it doesn't, again, doesn't serve, we don't believe it serves much purpose. And it also talks about. Being reduced that that it would allow for the buffer to be reduced or eliminated if the local conservation district deems such. We've never really been able to define who the local conservation district is necessarily, where that language comes from. And so it sort of it sort of becomes a moot point, because and and I'll and I'll tell you why it becomes moot, because really, this buffer is. Is extrapolated from what the biologists are telling us about the site relative to the critical areas, and so. If we were to get a management plan that that said, yes, a twenty a fifty foot buffer will help protect the help protect. The shoreline ecological functions. Of, you know, for some stated reason, then the administrator or us as staff would probably recommend such a thing. But the likelihood is that they won't, and and the likelihood is that that's because it's already going to be protected through. Other provisions in the program. Lastly. There was some additional language added about fill or structures proposed within a flood hat, a special flood hazard area. And that those shall comply with the flood hazard construction standards of eighteen ten, this is obviously directly related to. Getting in through door two and consistency with the biological opinion. And and relating and tying the master program back to. The flood hazard construction standards in doing so. Are there any questions about any of any of what I've just gone over here?
And Commissioner Soltis, if you wanted to unmute yourself at star six on your phone.
You're waiting on me, guys, I think it all sounds pretty solid from my perspective from the phone. Thank you, Carl.
Okay.
I agree.
Carl, I'm good with it, too.
Great, that's good to hear.
I'm good, Carl.
All right, I'm going to move along, chair, if that's okay. The next slides will go a little a little bit faster. This is also related to section six point two point five point two three, and I'll go back to what I'm sharing here and scroll back up. To this section, and and so what was provided to you looks a little bit different. In your packet, and so this was a change that was made as a result of some discussions with. Kim Van Zwollenberg at the Department of Ecology, and they they had some issue. With us just bringing in language from. From Gig Harbor Municipal Code eighteen ten. One hundred, which is the section that discusses compliance with the Endangered Species Act. And so they wanted it to be pretty clear that. That there is a separation between our master program and this compliance with the Endangered Species Act, and that. Not necessarily will you always have to comply. Or you may not always have to include. Specific language in your habitat assessment and management plan. If you were to meet certain exemptions, and that needs to be kept completely separate from our master program. So Kim and I crafted this language that that that. Meets with what the college with the guidance that ecology was providing us. And still gets to the point that we were trying to make. And and includes the language that we still really wanted in the master program anyway, and so everybody kind of wins in this in this regard, because. This V one that you're looking at here, this determination that the regulated activity meets the standards of no effect or not likely to adversely affect. Endangered, to adversely affect dangers. I think that might be a miswritten there, I have to look at that, doesn't read, that doesn't read quite right. But the point is is that we needed to try and get that language into. The master program, because that really is the direct tie to getting into this door to programmatic approach, we feel. And so the idea here is that somebody who is applying for a development permit. Substantial development permit in the shoreline jurisdiction. Would look at what analysis would need to be made for habitat assessment and management plan. And when they got to this point, they would recognize now that there is another set of specific. Determinations that or the specific determination that needs that might need to be made relative to the Endangered Species Act. And so they would then go to eighteen ten one hundred in our municipal code, and then they would go to eighteen ten one ten. Which offers some exemptions from a habitat assessment required under eighteen ten one hundred. And so if a project were to meet those exemptions within eighteen ten one ten, they would not have to include. This effects language within their ham for their shoreline substantial development permit. Under the Gig Harbor shoreline master program. So it satisfies both FEMA FEMA's need. To to enforce the requirements that came out of the biological opinion. The court ordered biological opinion, and it also, we think, satisfies. Ecology's need to keep these two ideas very distinct from each other. Any, does anybody have any questions about that? Clear, clear as mud. Good. Sorry, sorry for the awkward silence there, just one moment. Getting back to the slideshow then really quick, there we did make one other slight change to that language, and I included it on this slide. It's not included in chapter six, I'm recognizing, and that is this language to say, if applicable. The ham shall also include, but may not be limited to, the analysis requirements found in Gig Harbor Municipal Code eighteen ten one hundred. Compliance with the Endangered Species Act as follows, and then it would go into that determination language, so we feel like that. That gets that gets to the, again, gets to the heart of what we're trying to achieve here, so. All right, the next change is to the wetlands analysis report requirements. So these these next few changes were changes that were made previously by Peter Caddich. And Gready, and I believe were were likely reviewed by the planning commission at some point, but I don't know that for sure. And so I wanted to make sure and bring these changes to the planning commission's attention. One last time before we get to hearing and make sure that there are no issues with this. Again, this one is relative to still relative to E, item E in the checklist. And so this this is new language added to that subset, added a new subsection added to. Six point two point five eleven, if development is proposed within an area of special flood hazard. The analysis report must include the elevations of the ten fifty and one hundred year floods where such data are available. And so I think that's pretty, I think that's pretty straightforward language there. This is again, this is in the streams critical area reports, this would be of some some changed or amended language relative to. What would be required in a streams critical areas report. And so we we eliminated this language here that is lined out. And added this language that the stream analysis report should be prepared in accordance with acceptable scientific method. Submitted to the administrator for review for any proposals that are within two hundred feet of a stream. In addition to project impacts to species and habitats, the report shall address project impacts to water quality, water quantity, flood volume, and flood velocities. Developments proposed in the area, and then we get into this fifty ten and one hundred year floods again, where such data are available. This is really just beefing up the language and and tying it back to our flood hazard construction standards. So I think this is all all language that's really coming from. A FEMA checklist that was provided to the city in order to find consistency between the two plans.
Oh, I just was curious, how often is the data on the ten? Ten, fifty and a hundred-year floods available?
How often is the, are you mean that how often is the data updated or?
Right, and how available is it to an applicant, I guess, is my question.
That's, that's a good question. I don't know how available that data is. We would rely on. We would rely on our biologists to. To find, to, to review that data, and the applicant would need to rely on their biologists to provide it. And so they could probably do that in, in, in consultation with, with the agencies, FEMA, for instance. To, to find, to find and get that of it, that data and include it in the report. Otherwise, Kim, do you have a better answer than I, than Matt?
My answer was FEMA.
Yeah.
FEMA would be the source for that?
I think so. I don't know for a fact, but I can't imagine that any other agency would be able to provide that with more accuracy than FEMA. It, I, I imagine that they have separate flood panels that are indicative of that information that are publicly available data.
Okay, thanks.
And an applicant would know, you know, if they're in the special flood hazard area by, by reviewing the. The firm maps that are on file with the, with the city and can be found online as well. So that would be the first indicator for, for an applicant.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so moving on, still in item E. We added a new subsection. Again, this is relative to streams. If the stream, relative to a stream crossing specifically. And just talks about when a stream crossing would need to meet other requirements found in the. In the flood hazard construction standards ordinance, again, sort of just tying our critical areas ordinance a little bit more and. Shoreline Master Program, tying them more closely to. Together. Okay, so here, yeah, we're still in E. This is more on streams and performance standards. This is relative to stream bank stabilization. And I'd have to share another section with you, just one second here. Six sixty-two. Six. Sorry for the back and forth. I have a better way of doing this. Some of these are just too much language. So this is a whole new section on stream bank stabilization. And this language comes again from, from FEMA. It's relative to checklist. That was provided to the city during, during the early days of this periodic review. And incorporated into the code. And again, this is all relative to that. Getting through and into door two and making our code more consistent with, with the requirements to become a door to community. And I, I think I'm, I'm not going to read the language verbatim unless anybody wants me to, but I think it's. I think it's fairly clear what they're, what they're trying to do here. Okay, I'm gonna move along if there's no questions on that. Back to the slideshow. Okay, finally, we've moved on to a new line item in the checklist. This is line item G. Where we're amending a section within our wetlands and permitted uses and buffer areas to clarify where previous trails and viewing platforms can be located. This has come up so many times in, and confused so many planners in reading this because. You'll see when you read this, so this is really just a clarity amendment. But the way it read before was that we would say, okay, you have a category one wetland. And your minimum distance from the wetland edge is not less than seventy-five percent of the category one, two. And three buffer, I should say three, that's a, that's a mistake. Buffer width established in, in section six point two point five point one-two. And so that obviously was very confusing because in one hand, we're saying it's a category one wetland. But then we're saying that it can't, that, that the buffer or, or the, the minimum distance. For a previous trail or viewing platform from the buffer edge. It can't be less than seventy-five percent of a category one, two and three buffer. So it's just kind of. And then it was like, well, am I making a choice there between one, two and three? And of course, you're gonna, you know, if you're an applicant, you're gonna choose. Category three. So, so it was just something that needed to be cleaned up. This is item H. This is another cleanup. We had a, we just had a bad reference. We were referencing to subsection six point two point five point one zero. And we should have been referencing to six point five, six point two point five point one-one. And this happened in several locations throughout this, this code section. And of course, now it's six point two point five point one-two that we're trying to reference to, just to further confuse this thing. But this, again, is just a, another, was a clerical error when there was an update made to the master program. Like however many years ago, and so something that just needed to be corrected. Okay, so this one is amendment, oh, this was an amendment to the habitats scores. And so there were, there, along the way, there, there's been a change in the way that we regulate wetlands. And in the way that the biologists rate those wetlands. And so they're using a new. Using a new rating. Form and, and new classifications definitions. And so both of these last two slides are relative to those. To the rating system and the, and the forms, and so. And the, these habitat scores have already been changed in our critical areas ordinance in eighteen oh eight oh four oh. And so what we're doing in the program here is really just bringing those. Into consistency with what's already been changed in eighteen oh eight oh four oh. And if, is anybody interested in, in seeing those? The changes in the tables or? That, it's not, this, this is one of those sort of mandatory changes. We don't really have a, we can't really. Make it, not really a decision point to be made here, but. I, I, it's important to, to show you. And then this next slide is the same idea, except in this case, we have not updated the critical areas ordinance. With these new definitions for the classifications. And I think I will show you this one really quick. This is the last one, so let me do that. And so we will have to make those changes. To eighteen oh eight as well. So here you can see that we've incorporated, now the language is very similar to what was already there. It's just been. Massaged a bit and just changed in, really in its format and its layout more than anything. But it does include the changed scoring system. For what would constitute a category one wetland, the category two, category three and category four. So it's a, it's a, it's a good change. Here's how it used to be laid out. So it's really just kind of condensed it a little bit more. It's made it a bit more concise. And then changed those rating numbers. You can see here, wetlands for a category one, a wetland that performs high, that perform high functions. Those would be those that score seventy points or more. And now. Under the new system. For function, that would be scoring twenty-three points or more. It's, it doesn't mean that we've. Eliminated or we've loosened the regulation in any way. It's just the way that they're rating them has changed.
Thank you for clarifying that, because that was, I kept thinking, why are we making it easier? So I'm glad you clarified that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, at first blush, it does look like that. Oh geez, what is letting people just fill the wetlands now all of a sudden, but no, it's just. It's actually, it's actually gonna be more stringent, you know, the, and the buffers have, have certainly changed and gotten bigger over the years, so.
Thanks.
Right. And that, Chair concludes. My presentation. For this evening. And I'll open it up to, I'll, I'll, I'll give it back to you.
Okay, great. Thanks and well done. As always, concise, thoughtful work. That I think makes our jobs pretty easy. Does anybody have any questions?
I just want to thank Carol for a very good presentation. That was a lot of complex material to go through and. I think he did a really good job. Sometimes I don't know how he keeps the sanity, trying to deal with all these different issues and. All the minutia in this, but it was very well explained.
Thank you very much. And I would, I would give a lot of that credit over to Kim, especially keeping me sane.
I think that one paragraph sentence that you were stumbling over was just missing the word the, that, that would have it make sense.
Thank you. Yeah, I was trying to read through that and I just got tongue-tied on that sentence. I lost my train of thought because I just didn't read right, so I have to go back.
And I did notice there was one spot that, a, and I can't believe you guys, you had this oversight because you never do, but there was. A D that was switched to a knee that needs to be switched back to a D. Because you had A, B and C above. And, and it was one of the last, last things that you went over. But I didn't want to up your train of thought at the time.
Well, I, I need to find it though. So it was a bad citation in the, was that, that was actually in the body of the.
Yeah, and one of the changes, it wasn't a citation. It was, it was just a.
Was it her list?
Yeah, you know, in one of the, in one of the subsets.
Understood.
Okay, we'll, we'll find that.
One of the ones in green, I think it was.
Okay. Well. Then let's talk about our next meeting on, on Thursday, August nineteenth.
Yes, Chairman, I am not going to be available for that meeting. I'm going to be away. And won't be able to get in contact, so I will not be available.
Okay.
I will probably sign in a little bit late. I have an all-day session that concludes at five o'clock, so. As soon as that's over, I'll come on.
Okay, great. Appreciate the heads up. Okay.
Is there anything you need to say about the August nineteenth meeting, Carl, or we'll just wait for the materials?
Yeah, I don't have anything to report on it at the moment, Chair. I'm, we, the, the hope, the plan is to bring forward the. What, the arts and culture element that we're trying to incorporate into the. Into the comprehensive plan. And the applicant on that is, of course, the Arts Commission. And so we've met with the Arts Commission a couple of times. Working with a consultant called SCJ Alliance on that one. And they've also done some work on surveying our land use and housing elements. For consistency with some of the changes that were made during the recent moratorium. To our Gig Harbor Municipal Code, just to make sure that we're not too far out of step here for the next couple of years before we get to. Overhauling the comprehensive plan in its entirety. And so my, my hope was to bring you some of that on the nineteenth as kind of our first. First look at it. I will say that it's, the, the process has been slowed a little bit. Just because trying to, we, we've gone back to the Arts Commission. To make sure that what they proposed back in twenty-eighteen is still kind of the direction they want to go. And so we've received some comments back from them on. The current draft of the element. And so we're trying to kind of hone that in and make sure that they're comfortable with it before bringing it. To the planning commission. And I'll also say that a couple of the arts commissioners may. May be present at those, at the planning commission meetings for those. For that review, just as, you know, as the applicant, and, and I think that'll be very helpful. To have them help describe kind of, you know, where some of this, where some of the language is coming from, but. They would be, they would be there in, in their capacity as an applicant and not necessarily as, you know, commissioners. If that makes sense. I don't know. It's a little bit, it's a little gray, I guess, but anyway.
Oh, that's, I mean, well, they're, they're, they're open meetings anyway, so. Yeah, I just think maybe we just need to set the ground rules at the beginning. Are they? I, I, I guess it's gonna be, they don't speak unless spoken to kind of situation or?
Yeah, it's your, that's true. It is, it is the planning commission's meeting at that point. And so they really are more, you know, more of a, in, in, in an applicant role. You know, and that happens where we have applications from, from private developers that. You know, that might, might end up coming to the planning commission, or, you know, there's a comp plan amendment that's been proposed by, from the private sector. You know, they would, they would be allowed to come as a, you know, in their capacity as a, as an applicant. Really more so at the, at the public hearing level, I think. And so coming to the study session, you know, I, I maybe, maybe that doesn't make as much sense. Maybe I need to rethink that, because I definitely want to. I want to respect the planning commission's autonomy. While also respecting their opportunity to, you know, to, as the, as sort of the. The content experts, so to speak.
Sure, sure. Okay. All right, well, we'll look forward to that. And at this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
This Chairman so moved?
Okay, there's been a, a second to the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Motion passes almost unanimously. There might be an abstain.
My presentation, my presentation was not, not very captivating, so.
Thank you all.